Please rise for applicable reasons. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Calls me an Indigenous School District 544 to order. Clerk, can you establish a form for us, please?
Certainly. Kirby Anderson.
Present.
Natalie Knutson.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Missy Hermes, present. Stephen Biggessa.
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you. I thank you, a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Agreed.
Thank you, Melanie. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Kirby, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Agenda passes. Moving on to our resolution of acknowledgements.
I'd like to offer the following resolution and move for its adoption. A sincere thank you to the Fergus Falls 544 Education Foundation, who generously awarded nearly $34,000 in grants to the Fergus Falls School District.
Can I get a second on that resolution?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Kirby. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Biggessa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to reports, we have Kirby Anderson, 544 Education Foundation and Finance.
Yes, I'll talk about the 544 Foundation meeting they met last Thursday. And we just read the resolution, which summarized the seven requests for the classroom lists, and all of them were funded in buckets of undesignated money left over, which will go to this year's grants. We have 107 of our staff members here that signed up for payable deduction for 544. That's up a couple from last year. As of right now, we still don't have a venue for the 2021 All-School Reunion we were going to have at Bigwood, and that's not available anymore, at least for this time. We're looking at the Armory, but so right now, looking around. I think our All-School Reunion Committee is meeting two weeks to see if we can find something. Give to the Max Day is Thursday, November 19th. We promote that, nothing specific going on, but that's coming up. So, other than that, I think our, I had our, their, their, oh yeah, the other thing was they were going to come out with a new release, which we just did in our resolution. So, that's all my reports. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions for Kirby? Thank you, Kirby. Melanie Cole, Special Ed Co-op, Region One and Activities.
Special Ed Co-op met today, and we had as guest speakers the early childhood special education staff that go out to see the up-to-three-year-old citizens in our community that might qualify for special education intervention. And there are some medical conditions that would automatically qualify them to have services in the home. That's the norm. Of course, not right now because of COVID. But just kind of nice to hear from this segment of the educational system that serves our very tender population and does a very nice job. So, that was a feature of our meeting today. And then, we mostly just reviewed personnel activity for the cooperative and a note to any young aspiring speech-language pathologists that it's an open field and they should pursue it aggressively because it's always a hard category to fill for employment-wise. But, so that's a summary for Special Ed Co-op. Activities Committee did not meet, and the Region One Board just talked about, as they provide technological services to the area school districts, talked about the beginning of the school year and how their products were working. And we reviewed the audit and the budget and a couple of personnel moves. So, nothing extraordinary there. And that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for Melanie? Thank you, Melanie. I'm Missy Hermes, Staff Development and Policy.
On policy, it looks like we'll be meeting soon, but we didn't meet recently. In terms of staff development, that committee has actually met twice since the last time we reported. And there was a really good statement that I heard coming out of that committee at the meeting, that they're evolving from a committee that simply approves requests to one that's re-establishing, making it really mindful what that funding is spent on for staff development. And so, they've also updated what teachers are going to do following, that after you've gotten the funding, and then you've gone to your staff development training, whatever you chose. And not just teachers, I should say staff, all staff, right, or eligible, but that there's going to be a reflection piece that will be presented too. So, they're going to think about, you know, they're going to, would you recommend this training in the future to someone else? What are some takeaways? And how are you going to present that to other people in your department or in your grade level? And how have you used this in your class as well? So, I thought that was fantastic. And then, one other committee that's not on the agenda. I just wanted to report that today is Indigenous Peoples' Day. And just to remind the public that we do have a Native American, Alaska Native Parent Organization. Sarah Camper is the staff contact for that. And I go to their meetings too. They have sent out a survey asking parents and families of Native American students, you know, what are some needs that you have? And also put it out, information to teachers who are supposed to be implementing Native American culture and heritage across the curriculum, that if they need some resources, that we're able to do that as well.
Any questions for Missy? Thank you, Missy. Natalie Knutson, Wellness and Buildings and Grounds.
Well, neither committee has met, but just from the Buildings and Grounds side of things, as people have gone out to the Target site or the Lincoln School site, they're seeing things are changing, progress is being made externally and a lot going on internally. So, still waiting for that late December, January timeline on that project.
Any questions for Natalie? Thank you, Natalie. Under my reports, Lakes Country Service Co-op Board has not met, so I have nothing to report for them. And then, Minnesota High School League, they have had, well, they've been on news, so I think we weren't paying attention. But anyway, they have met a couple times. So, one was October 1st, and then October 8th, since the last that they have met and talked on. One was a regular board meeting. And on that synopsis, just basically, I think the big thing that people focused on is that the athletic season calendar for 2021, 2020 and 2021 school year, they had talked about for winter sports activities, they set the dates for when they were going to be starting. So, there's some changes in that. And then, also that the maximum winter activity calendar that will trim 30% of contests. So, and that's to give some flexibility within the schedule. So, if they have to reschedule a game, there's some, that activity directors have some flexibility within the schedule to be able to make up those games, hopefully. So, that was some of the rationale why to do the reduction in games. So, and then less travel, of course, and everything else that goes with that too. But part of it was also some flexibility within the schedule. And then, the other thing they talked about is they did talk about spring sports. And they're going to push forward one week with the exception of track and field and softball, which will move ahead two weeks from what they had previously had talked about starting in. And other than that, they talked just about just regular business, some financial things. They are looking again to hopefully get some additional sponsors, corporate sponsors for when they do again have post, you know, state competition again. So, they're hoping to, that part of their revenue stream will once again be there for them. So, they did talk about that and have set up a committee to work on that. And then, the other one on October 8th was just that they made a change. Before this, indoor competitions, there was no fans allowed. And they have now changed that to allow up to two people per participant, not to exceed the capacity of 250 spectators, or that could be reduced because of the size of the facility that is, the competition's being hosted. So, but that was probably the biggest change that they have made recently. And as we know of COVID-19 and everything that's going on, subject to change, like anything else. So, that's what I have to report on the Minnesota High School League. Any questions, Kirby?
Probably more for Jeff. The, as I understand it, for the indoor sports, so each participant will have two tickets per person. As I understand it, they have to register ahead of time, they can't just show up at the door. Who can't get in with these? Staff can't get in. But they also have to register ahead of time with their name, phone number, email, everything. Are we going to be set up for all of it? Are we okay on that?
So, right now, Derek is researching electronic ticketing.
Okay.
So, that's really going to make things much easier for his department and also our fans as well. That way, no cash changes, et cetera, minimum contact.
Sure.
Yep.
All right.
So, I just use like EventBridge or something like that?
Yep.
Then if we would, you know, have something that happened and they needed to know who was there, then we would have the, have the list?
You still have the list where you sign in, yep.
Great.
For contact tracing.
Any other comments or questions? Steve Biggessa, Legislative Liaison, Meet and Confere and Curriculum Review.
Sure. Meet and Confere and Curriculum Review have not met. The Strategic Planning Curriculum Review met, and I'll let Jeff cover that. But the legislative, on the legislative side, there's a few things that happened. The census has actually been extended, which, what does this have to do with education? And really, it's, it was supposed to be done by September 30th, it's going to go through October 30th. And, you know, a more accurate census helps them. I mean, when we know where people are, we know what types of nationalities are being represented in different schools, can help with the funding formula. There's things that can be tripled down through the census. So, that was extended. I don't know how in the world they're going to finish this with COVID, to be quite honest, but they're going to try, which is great. Budget deficit, you know, it's been said that everything is on the table to solve the budget deficit, the 2.3 billion. They say they have about 2.4 billion in reserves. You know, in light of draining the savings account, I don't know if they're just going to do that. They're probably going to look at cutting some funding, but they haven't given out any guidance yet. On December, they're going to have a revenue forecast done. So, they're kind of waiting to see on that. But, not great, but at least there's some money in the bank to help, proverbial bank, I guess, to help. Another thing that was interesting is the FCC lowered tariffs on telecommunications nationwide to, actually, it'll affect rural internet. So, some of our bills might be going down with Ottertail Telecoms and different marginally. But it's not quite, you know, the National School Board Association is a big advocate for this. They don't feel like it's enough, but it's a step. You know, I think they want free internet for everybody, you know, especially students, but I don't know if they're going to get that or not. But, who knows? An interesting case was struck down in the South Carolina Supreme Court, which, why does that matter? Well, it has to do with the CARES Act, money that is being used for private schools. The Supreme Court said that we should, governors should not be using CARES money for private schools. And has that happened in Minnesota yet? No, but it does set a precedent that we might be getting some more of that money that could be, that was previously allocated towards private schools. Because, quite frankly, they just said that money's meant for, it's tax paid dollars meant for public education. So, the next round, this could more affect the next round if there is a second relief bill ever passed, where states would be getting a little bit more money. There are a bunch of bills being introduced, and I typically don't talk about bills because some of them are kind of crazy, and we don't know which ones are going to be passed. But they're already starting to introduce some stuff, which is nice to see some activities. The second relief bill is stalled right now, as a lot of us probably know. The Democrats did pass a $2.2 trillion bill in the House. Republicans countered with a $1.62 billion, or trillion bill. They both included some significant K-12 aid, but Trump stalled the talks recently, and I don't know if they're going to get that done before the election or not. But there could be some more money coming our way through that when they get their act together. So, that's about all I have today for my reports. So.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you, Steve. Superintendent Drake.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
First, under thank yous and recognition, just want to thank everyone that helped out with Homecoming last week. Even though the event was truncated from our typical festivities, I did have an opportunity to sit next to some parents in the bleachers on a beautiful Friday afternoon during Powder Pop Football and the coronation. And the parents were just very, very appreciative of the school letting the kids have a bit of normalcy to kind of close the week off. And so, that was, I thought I would just pass along my appreciation to that. Congratulations to Austin Rinkie and Hope Fatchell, who are Fergus Falls' Homecoming King and Queen. I want to give a special thanks to both Derek and Amber in the Activities Office. The Minnesota State High School League made its announcement at 10 o'clock on Thursday morning that it was going to allow now a limited number of fans at our indoor events. And so, as you can imagine, statewide Activities Offices had their phones ringing with people wanting to know if they could get into the events held just a few hours later on a Thursday evening. And just want to commend both Derek and Amber, who really went out of their way to accommodate our parents, both with a home swimming event. This would have been the only event that the parents of the seniors would have been able to see regular season this year. So, they made arrangements to get those parents in. And then, we had a volleyball match over in Brainerd, and we were able to work with the Brainerd Public School System so some of our parents could travel over there and see the season-opening volleyball match as well. So, really thankful for all the extra work that they went to. And then, a couple of weeks ago, as you know, because I talk about it frequently, climate and culture is so important to me. I started on Thursday mornings, just Thankful Thursdays document that goes out to the district. And it's an opportunity for us to recognize our colleagues for things that they have done either for us or for the students or for the district. And I will continue to do that. It's a stressful time for the district and for our community, but we still have so many reasons to be grateful for all the positive things in our life. And it is a healthy thing to reflect on those and share them with each other. Switching news, our Ottertail County case rates per 10,000 hit the 20 mark for the first time since school opened. We were at 21.04. Our cases will probably result in a higher figure yet by maybe a couple ticks this coming Thursday as well. So, that is something we will continue to monitor. Technically, if we were making decisions strictly by the numbers, now that we're in the 20s, that would kick us into a Tier III hybrid schedule, both K-6 and 712. I've shared this with the Board certainly, but I do want to share it with the community as well. We recognize what a difference Tier III makes for our students, families and staff because of the need for childcare on the hybrid days, et cetera. We will continue to just look at our case rates and be having both internal conversations as a staff, school board, as well as Ottertail Public Health and the Minnesota Department of Health with our contacts. And if we decide that we need to make a change in our learning mode, we will give plenty of advance notice for families to prepare for that. So, for right now, the plan is, for as long as we possibly can, to remain in Tier II. Enrollment update, we have a total, we're up a total of 13 students since the start of the school year. That is due to increased enrollment at the ALC and IQ Academy. IQ Academy's up 15 students, the ALC is up eight. KSS, I don't know what the odds were, but KSS is exactly the same as it was in September when we started. And then, we're down 10 students K through four for an overall positive change in the enrollment of 13. We have parent-teacher conferences coming up soon. They will be done virtually via Google Meets with a few exceptions due to special circumstances face-to-face. They're on the evening from 4 o'clock to 7:45 PM on October 22nd and October 26th, and 8 AM to 3:15 on October 23rd. And parents can sign up electronically for a conference slot. Technology update, we are still expecting our Chromebooks to arrive the last week of October. We are expecting a fairly quick turnaround, if needed, from the tech department so that we can distribute those Chromebooks to our elementary students. Lincoln School update, if you've been by there recently, you'll notice that the exterior paint is starting to go on there. It's kind of a stone color, and then it will have some maroon stripes. So, basically, the exact flip of the paint structure that was there when Target owned the building. The playground fence is up, and they're continuing to sheet rock and finish up work on the interior. On the building side of things, we're getting quotes on some much-needed tuck pointing at Roosevelt. This will be a fairly substantial project and probably will be something we would look at entertaining in the next fiscal year. We need to upgrade the sound system in the Prairie Science classes. There's four classrooms there, and it's going to run about 1,500 apiece. We have recharging parts for the Chromebooks for the elementary on order. And then, we also need to replace the LCD projector in the auditorium. And the bigger plan is to also put in the electronics to allow the presenter to plug into the system right down by the stage. Currently, you have to be up at the module that's kind of in that mezzanine level. And really, for presenters, it would be so much more convenient to be able to access the LCD projector right down where you're presenting. So, that will all be part of that project. Our PLCs, as you're aware, are equity, diversity and inclusion, especially out of respect for the teachers doing the hybrid learning piece of instruction. I did take that curriculum, split it in half and spread it out over two years instead of trying to get the curriculum done in one. My hope is it will take a brick or two off the load of the teaching staff, but I really also wanted to make sure that it allowed time for the conversations on this topic and reflection to take place as we examine both ourselves personally and our district as an organization. And then, finally, on strategic planning, we did have the Curriculum Committee from the Strategic Plan met last Wednesday. We needed to do some catch-up and reminders of the journey that we had taken up to this point, about what we want students to learn and be able to do. We talked about social-emotional learning. And then, that led into our planned conversation about gifted and talented education. We will jump off from that point for our next meeting. And as time allows, we will talk about the ISTI technology standards and digital literacy. So, that completes my report unless there are any questions.
Any questions for Superintendent Drake? Thank you. Moving on to our general consent items, we have the minutes from our September 28th Board meeting. Bills and Treasury Report.
Bills and Treasury Report. The Treasuries Report, we have approximately $11.4 million in current balance right now, down from $12.2 million last month at this time. And when Blake and I talked about that, we determined that's about average for this particular month of this time of the year. And then, on the bills, Melanie and I came in early and went through the bills. And we had $387,000 that went to IQ Academy, or, I'm sorry, K-12 Management, which was an annual thing, but also a little higher this year because we have higher enrollment. And some security cameras that went in for $3,700. I think there was one, Jeff, you probably helped, now this is over, I think this is one with the Activities area. And what was your?
I think you mentioned it was a concession stand.
Okay.
A security camera.
Yes.
So, those are regular security cameras, not the temperature ones. $18,000, and that was our, to Zoom, and that was our, that's our annual fee. And I thought that was relatively reasonable. Seems like we have a lot of users on Zoom, and it seems like it's a critical part of our infrastructure right now. Let's see, what else? We had some bills that went for Lincoln. We did some lighting retrogrades here, $10,000 for NKSS, and part of that will be refunded through a rebate program. $6,200 to design intent architects. And so, we, this is something that Bill and I both talked to, with each other about, and we just said, maybe see if we can cut the corridor on these days. So, anyways, that will be another discussion down the road, but that's something to be aware of. That was $6,200. $14,500 to IBALE is an audit charge for the annual audit. And Lakes Country Service Co-op, we had the Early Childhood Services bill for $174,000. That's an annual thing. A lot of annual fees, and then we had some thermal cameras, the temperature from tech check, that was $91,000. So, we had, I think, six or eight more questions on individual ones, but we came up with the right answer on all of them, I think. Any questions on any of the bills or Treasuries Report?
Thank you, Kirby. Okay, moving on, Personnel, Elaine Jenkins.
Good evening, everyone. Our personnel is a little lighter this evening, which I'm happy to report. Certified staff hires, we have Ashton Hughes, elementary teacher, just an IQ, elementary teacher in IQ with a contract increase. Certified staff resignation, Dan Ollender, Orchestra General Music Teacher at KSS in Cleveland. And then, Doug Anderson, Facility Supervisor for the rest of the 2021 school year along with the 2122 school year, and that would be effective 12/1/24.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, Missy. Do I have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Steve. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? General consent items pass. There is no old business, moving on to new business. We have the 2020, 2021 Assurance of Compliance with State and Federal Law Prohibiting Discrimination. And this is an annual one, so can I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Thank you, Missy. Do we have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Melanie. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Item number two is the Community Education 2020, 2021 Drivers Educational Program. Program free for classroom and behind the wheel, being set at $300 for ISD 544 students and $325, $225 for non-ISD 544 students, effective 10/12 of 2020. Can I get a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Do I have a second? All right. Thank you, Kirby. Superintendent Drake, do you want to speak on this at all?
The fees have been pretty constant for quite a period of time. This represents just a little cushion for us, but basically reflects our cost per student for the program. This represents just a little cushion press, but basically reflects our cost per student for the program. So, it's definitely appropriate that the fees be set at this way.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. That concludes our regular school board meeting. Our next regular school board meeting will be Monday, October 26th, 5:15, right here at the Otter Community Room. Following this, we, Board Meeting, we will go into a work session and talk about youth activities, student enrollment, gymnastics contract, and Roosevelt Education Center entrance. With that, can I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Steve. Do I have a second?
One second.
Thank you, Natalie. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We are adjourned.